Good evening, this is Paul's meeting order. It's the 8th of November, 2011. Meeting of the Champagne County Board for Justice, Finance, Policy and Policy Services. Time is 6:05. Please set your telephone to offer the volume. We will call please.
Alex?
Here.
Ammons? Anderson?
Here.
Benzel?
Here.
Burksen?
Here.
Betts?
Here.
Carter?
Here.
Coer?
Coer.
Esri?
Here.
Holderfield?
Here.
James?
Here.
Jay?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Kurtz? Langenheim?
Here.
Maxwell?
Here.
McGinty?
Here.
Michaels?
Here.
Mosher?
Here.
Nudo?
Here.
O'Connor?
Here.
Petrie?
Here.
Whizzenberry?
Here.
Richards?
Here.
Rosales?
Here.
Schrader?
Here.
White?
Here. Therefore, Mr. Kurtz has indicated to me that they are not going to make a meeting tonight. Seek approval of the minutes through the whole by 31:00 to 11:00 in the time of next session of the motion to adjourn by 37:00 to 11:00.
So moved.
Nearby, Mr. Jay, and seconded by Mr. Valas. Discussion. See none in favor?
Aye.
All party members. Seek approval of the agenda in the agenda.
So moved.
To the Mr. James, seconded by Mr. Carter. We're going to pull items 91 and 94. I remember the county championships were both ago, they're not here tonight. 91 and 94. I can claim landfill of a restructuring. Loan is on the agenda. Anything else? Any special notice? All in favor?
Aye.
All parties, all party chairs. Call participation.
Good evening. I am not here to speak to the policy committee this evening.
Excuse me, could you pull the mic up? I'm sorry, here back here.
Is that better?
Thank you.
I'm here to speak to the policy committee tonight regarding a proposed resolution in support of renaming the federal courthouse here in Urbana after my late father, James R. Burgess Jr. Some of you may know that my father was a state's attorney here in Champagne County from 1972 to 1976, and then became a U.S. Attorney in what was then the Southern or Eastern District of Illinois, later designated Southern District of Illinois. My father came from humble beginnings on a rural farm in Tennessee. He was one of eight children. A lot of things, my dad's been gone 15 years now, and a lot of things I didn't know when I was growing up about my dad's military experience. He was a veteran of 20 years. After he retired, after 20 years as a major, he went to law school here at the University of Illinois. Although he wasn't a lifelong resident of Champagne County, he was made this his home for upwards of 30 years. My dad was a quiet hero, pioneer who didn't call attention to himself. During World War II, he followed the station to 761st Tank Battalion of the United States Army. He was the first tank battalion committed to battle comprised of black soldiers, which was stated in that Presidential Unit Citation for extraordinary heroism, and was awarded by President Carter in 1978. He remained in the military until 1962, serving as a special agent in the County Intelligence Corps, achieving the rank of Major. My dad faced formal challenges throughout his whole life. He quietly and resolutely overcame them. He broke barriers of discrimination and segregation by his accomplishments of goals African-Americans would discourage from even attempting to achieve. In doing so, he embodied the best and most universal aspect of American spirit, the determination to be a free and equal individual, accepting no arbitrary limitations imposed by society. And I'm asking for the federal courthouse, which is actually takes an act of Congress to do, to be named in his honor, and I think it'd be a fitting memorial to all that he achieved during his lifetime, and an inspiration for all Americans. I also like to point out that during my dad's time here in this committee, he served in numerous civic organizations, Don Lloyd's Boys Club, Francis Nelson Health Center. He instituted new legal initiatives whilst he was a state attorney, the Adult Diversion Program, which I do believe still exists to this day. He started the law school interns to the state attorney's office, and adult legal education. Also whilst he was here, he had able-bodied staff, a similar team of professionals, some of whom is Judge Defonis, who is now the chief judge of the county court here. Judge Steigman is on the appellate court, and he needs to have you see the county administrator. So I, basically what I'm asking the county to do is to give me a bigger voice. I've already spoken to Senator Durbin, Senators Kirk and Representative Johnson, and everybody's deferring to Senator Durbin as far as whether he's going to introduce the bill on this matter or not. Thank you.
Mr. Clinton, hold that.
I'll be really brief. I just became aware of a story about his father. I found it very compelling and very inspiring, and enough to break the rain and come out and lend my single tiny voice in support of the resolution. So I would look for it. Thank you.
Is there any other party participation? Did you fill out a form?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and talk here, speak and then follow up from the gentleman afterwards.
I'd like to speak in favor of Steve's resolution too. That's it.
Should we fill out a state of name please before we go?
Charles Leach, Urbana.
Okay. Did you fill out a form here?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other party participation? I will pause that. Communications from the board. I have one. The MLK nominations are due this Thursday, November 10th, in the Community Relations Office of the City of Champagne. Any other communications from the board? All right? Justice Social Services.
Good evening. We've got a light agenda this month for Justice and Social Services concentration. I'll entertain a motion singly or omnibus to place these reports on file. Seconded by Carter. Is that for a one animal controller for all of them? Omnibus motion. Carter. Okay. I do want to note that emergency EMA report, you probably clicked on it today or the last few days, and you got a dead link, but it was actually, it was on there. There was a typo on the link, the report's actually there. And I have a copy of it that I will pass around afterwards. They, there were a few state federally mandated exercises that they did, but not the ordinary this one. Do you know if that link's been fixed? Sorry. But the county's aware of it, and if you're looking for that online, the link will be fixed, and it hasn't already, so you can read that. The EMA report. As far as animal control. We had 109 dogs impounded, 71 cats impounded, and unfortunately, we had euthanized 37 dogs and 20 cats. The JDC census was on the low side this month, ranging from nine up to the highest was we had one day of 19. Any questions on any of these reports? All in favor placing these reports on file?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes. Is there any other business? For the chair's report, I did want to take a minute to talk about the Citizens Advisory Commission for Jury Selection. We haven't talked about that in a couple months, and they, some new things that they've been doing. First, wanted to make sure everybody knows that Judge Defonis and Aaron Ammons are going to be at a brown bag luncheon at the Urbana City Building, 11:30 on Thursday with the League of Women Voters. Essentially doing an annual report briefing the League of Women Voters on the progress that the committee's made in the last year to make the juries more representative, getting more participation judges. And the commission largely came out of a report that it had annually for court watchers for the League of Women Voters. So this is an issue that they've attuned to for several years, but once again, it's going to be 11:30. The city council changes for Urbana on Thursday, brown bag lunch. I don't think that we've gone over the fact that the legislation committee pushed a couple of Champagne County representatives, Representative Jacobson and Senator Ferricks to sponsor HB 2066, was signed by the government, and that's going to add names to people filed on the employment list to the jury pools to help to create a wider base for them to solicit people from. And currently, the project that the commission is working on is, they are working with WBCP to potentially, it hasn't been passed to no deal to be signed, but potentially do a first Saturday of the month programming on WBCP about, about these issues, bringing on guests. WBCP's already been pretty good about having Aaron Ammons and Judge Defonis, and I believe Randy Rosenbaum's also been on there talking about these issues, but to have a once-a-month show talking about these issues on WBCP to reach it, to reach out to one of the communities that's been traditionally underserved by Champagne County jurors. Thank you, everybody. That is it from Justice and Social Services.
Good evening. First on finances from the RPC, it's a request for approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement for the Assist 2011 Home Buy Assistance Program. Is there a motion?
Settle by all, descend by time. Is there a discussion? Michael?
Let me just re-ask the question I asked the caucus. I see what this is, but more broadly, is this something that we just need to approve or concede, or are we going to be tied in eventually with this, this upcoming meeting?
This is an ongoing program. The county board has approved this program in the past, I think it's three or four years, and this is an annual renewal, and it doesn't, the county is not going to put money directly into this program. It's basically more like one of the grants, but it's administered by the RPC.
Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Amendments and transfers, the first transfer is 1100014 for 5350 to cover remaining fiscal revenue invoices out of public properties. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
By Steve Mosher, seconded by Chris. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number two, a transfer 1100015, board review 5827 is the amount of the transfer to, transfer money to the board of review budget to pay out benefits as of 11:30 11. Motion for approval by Stan, seconded by?
Second.
Ralph? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number three is a transfer 1100016 for $7,000 to move money to the BIM line item of General County. Is there a motion for approval by John, seconded by Stephanie? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This one's an amendment, 1100057 for 9,083 to, this is out of the insurance for reattaching the spire at the courthouse. Is there a motion? Approval by John J., seconded by Stan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And number five is a transfer 1100017 for 14,400 to reimburse RPC personnel hired for the 2011 traffic corps counts. Counts. A motion for approval by Stephanie. Is there a second by Pius? Discussion. Patsy.
Could somebody explain to me the purpose of these counts and how they're used?
Pius.
It's for planning of future improvements to the road.
Any other questions? Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. C, nursing home. First is approval of the issuance of tax anticipation warrants for the Champagne County nursing homes. Is there a motion for approval?
Tom.
Seconded by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number two is approval of the issuance of revenue to the Champagne County nursing home. Is there a motion for approval? By Ralph, seconded by Astrid. Discussion.
If I could just put my question to the agenda for that?
Please.
Say approval of issuance of revenue anticipation warrants for the Champagne County nursing
Other question? Pius.
Now, this is something new. Perhaps you could tell us what you know about it.
This is a, this is something that is allowed for in the county code and the statutes, but it's not done at all, it would seem, according to our bottom counsel, Kurt Frolik. But to assist the nursing home with the current delays in payments from the state, if the nursing home can provide documentation indicating that it is owed money and anticipation of wind debt money will be provided to the nursing home, the nursing home has the ability to issue these revenue anticipation notes and then repay as those funds come in that are delayed. We're aware that our nursing home and one other in the state right now is looking at this because of the severe cash short clause that they're experiencing because of the state not reimbursing on a timely basis. So Kurt Frolik has been working with Management Performance Associates, and what we currently anticipate is that we, we have today information for three months' worth of receipts, which is about $765,000. We can issue these revenue anticipation notes against 85% of that, and what we would anticipate is that we would do this this month in November, and then until the state catches back up or our cash position improves, that we would be issuing these warrants or these notes quarterly for the next year at least.
Questions? Stan.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but did the state have to give a guarantee that that money would be forthcoming before we could issue those bonds?
Yes, and we have that. That's why we only have three months' worth. They owe us more than that, but they have provided documentation that Kurt Frolik finds to be acceptable to be able to move forward with these documents.
And I know we've already voted on the other issue, but basically, we're extending out quite a bit on anticipation of monies that may or may not come in. I mean, I know based on history, they're going to, and on this, I know we're going to base it on the states that they'd have to sign off before they issue their bonds. But I just have a hard time dealing with, you know, we keep extending, extending, extending. There has to be a timeframe that we say, what's the other option? And I haven't heard much of that discussion from the last one.
Yeah, Patsy then Pius.
I asked this question, Park has suggested you could answer it for me. In these revenue warrants, is the amount that we will be borrowing equal to less than, more than what we anticipate getting from the state?
It's 85% of what we expect to receive, what we will have documented that the state has said we will receive.
I misunderstood. I thought that was, we could only borrow up to 85%. Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Pius.
I suppose to answer Mr. James' question, if you want to offer subsequent motion, have making our general fund to get cash flow to the nursing home to do that. It was an alternative, although I don't think I would support it.
That's why I didn't offer it. Thank you.
Other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Next up, county administrator, Deb.
First item is the General Corporate Fund Revenue Spender Projection Report, which is at your desks this evening, and it looks substantially the same as it has looked. We're looking to receive revenue at about 101% of budget with, you know, continuing solid performance in our sales taxes, which is, which is good news. We are still seeing general government, which is effectively our fees revenue not coming in where we had anticipated that they would for this year. We have adjusted for that in next year's budget. On the expenses provided, we'll spend 98% of the budget at this point in time, and they are going into the last month of the fiscal year, so hopefully this, this is fairly accurate, which leaves us at the end of the year with a projected ending revenue positive $671,000, putting the actual fund balance at 11.6% of the 2011 budget. If you subtract out the outstanding nursing home loan, we end at 10.3% of the fiscal 2011 budget. And the next page shows the budget change report since the beginning of the fiscal year.
Questions on others of those reports? Quiz.
In 90, Deb, what's our target fund balance?
Our stated target is 12.5% bond count, or rating agencies believe 10% is a good solid fund balance, so.
And we have not been very close to that, but that's good.
Not even close to that, that's right.
Any other questions before she continues? Anything from Harrison Harris?
Yeah, there is a Harrison Harris report, and you're in the handouts from this evening as well. And you'll see that year-to-date for the county funds, and this is all funds, not just general corporate, the county has seen the benefit of $247,874 in those collections.
Any other questions? Or a motion to accept all three and place them on file?
So moved.
By Brad, seconded by Quiz. Any other questions before the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next up, a resolution authorizing renewal of a loan from General Corp to the nursing home.
And this is just, this is the outstanding loan that you see on the budget report every month, the $333,142. And who will recall, earlier this year, the nursing home board had adopted a resolution indicating that it would work on the repayment of this loan, but because of the cash flow issues that they have experienced since summer, none of it has been repaid. This loan has to be renewed on an annual basis. You can't extend a loan for more than 12 months. So just as we have done since the first year this loan was granted in 2008, we're asking for this loan to be renewed for 2012.
Motion to do so? By Ron, seconded by Tom. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number five, the annual budget appropriation ordinance. Motion by Tom, seconded by Ralph. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and that will not be on consent though. Item number six is the annual tax levy ordinance. Motion by Tom to.
Second.
Seconded by Ralph. Alan.
Good question to Deb. I assume that salaries for the board review reflects the change in the pay time off thing that we talked about, is it reflected in there or how does that?
The budget?
Yeah.
Yes.
So it has to do with this, this budget to reflect this rate?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number seven is approval of recommendations to the county board for amendments to the schedule of authorized positions. Is there a motion for approval? By Stephanie, is there a second? By Ron. Discussion.
Chris, just one question now for Deb. Your memo, which is a place of case, YDIT function is probably more useful than the buyer function, but presumably, this centralized purchasing was instituted in the first place based on the assumption that the county could save money by inviting purchases from multiple departments. In what way is that no longer the case?
Well, I think it began to change with, with technology. There, there are fewer items that are purchased for general county stock than there were when it was started, probably 30 years ago. It's easier for departments to purchase those kinds of items independent of going through general county stock. Most office supply retailers are more than happy to establish an account, and you order today and they deliver it tomorrow, whereas maintaining a general county stock that meets the needs of all the diverse operations of county government, we have frequently had to, you know, absorb items that were purchased because it appeared the departments were going to use them, and then, again, especially with technology, a lot of those types of supplies are no longer used. So we've found the general county stock is really just very, very basic these days, and I don't think that we are generating great savings by buying in bulk in doing that.
Thank you.
Anything else on this issue? Diane then Patsy.
Just real quickly, I, I understand they're not buying in bulk, because sometimes you can tell data before you get to it, but are there places that, or vendors that you use as a group, maybe giving us a group discount when we order from there?
Well, it's certainly something that we can look at. We have vendors approach us, and if we're going to take that approach, I think the first thing we would have to do is assess or survey our departments and determine how much they're willing to limit themselves to a single vendor, and how much do we have that is so commonly purchased by all departments, and we just haven't done that. But if we were going to do that, then I would say we would also probably want to do an RFP to ensure that we were generating the best pricing that we could. Pricing is fairly competitive, though, in office supplies at this point in time.
Patsy.
Yes, I have a question on page 62. The amount of money that you were recommending to transfer is greater than the amount that you risk for that particular position. Does that indicate to us that you want to have some more on that salary?
Yes, I'm just asking to transfer the fully budgeted amount from the administrative services budget to the IT budget for, for them to use to fill that position at the, the best use capacity that we can do.
Anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Animal control, approval of intergovernmental agreement with the village of Ogden for animal control services. Is there a motion for approval by Ron? Is there a second by Pius? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. You've got the auditor's monthly purchases not following. Tony's here. Are there any questions or motions to put that report on file? By James?
I'll make that motion, if we can discuss after.
You got it. Motion by Quiz, and seconded by Pius.
Okay. I'd like to know more about buying a van outside of purchasing policy, but what happened there?
happened there. Hoping it falls under emergency.
Oh, okay. The county clerk is an elected official and therefore not subject to the purchasing policy, and the statutory limit for purchase without bid is thirty thousand dollars, and so he exercised his right to make a purchase without doing bids because it was twenty-two thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars.
Okay, so if he's not subject to the policy, why would he do this, buy into the policy?
Yeah.
Well, the county board policy, at least up until this point in the meeting, is twenty thousand dollars and over, has to be bid. This is just for your information, the money's already been spent, but this is letting you know that the county board's purchasing policy hasn't been followed in these instances. You know, on this agenda tonight, I believe, is raising that threshold, so, you know, this, this could either be seen as a not following policy, or as a sign that the policy you're considering changing needs to be changed. Thank you.
Anything else?
Chris, you at least have some assurance that this was a competitive purchase?
We asked the county clerk about doing bids or going through the GSA contracting system, and the clerk said that he had been checking with GSA, that the deal he found is better for their needs than anything he found in government contracts, so.
Sadly, I'm not surprised.
Any other questions?
And I, I will just add that the clerk did ask about whether or not you needed to be here tonight. You don't actually approve this tonight, you do it at the county board meeting, he will be at the county board meeting if you have additional questions, he'll be there to answer them.
Okay, thanks, Tom. And is the motion is on the report? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, treasurer, Dan, you have some good news?
You surprised me. I was only going to mention a couple things, a few details about the tax anticipation warrants for the nursing home. It's the fourth year we've done those, and they're allowed to send out these warrants on eighty-five percent of their operating budget. It's a little over made also, the bid this year was on eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, but we sent out twenty-six bid documents and got five responses, and the winning bid was one point one-two percent from Commerce Bank. They had it the first year, and they've been to the State's Bank, they had the last two years, so return back to Commerce Bank. Their one point one-two allowed for prepayment, which I like because we tried to prepay these loans as the real estate starts coming in the bank, and so we split it into two different warrant issues. Half the eight seventy-eight will be due July fifteenth, half due September twenty-eighth. And that's worked well for us in the last four years. Also, we'll catch one, they're different from revenue anticipation docs, and I'll be first to tell you, I can't find anybody that's ever done a revenue anticipation doc, but apparently I'm going to do one pretty quick. So what we do is a process, we'll be bidding out to twenty-six banks, and for response, I'll be real interested to see how they, how they approach it, when I talk to the approach from the nursing home. How the curves tend to provide along with the bid document itself, maybe a letter explaining, plain English about how they're going to arrive at this seven hundred and sixty-five thousand per quarter, and how we're going to do it, still be news to me as well. We'll be working, we've worked on it quite a bit, I think it's actually, I'm kind of surprised to tell you the truth, that they've qualified for an RE. It seemed like the hurdles were high for them to get the insurance from the state that they owed it, if they're going to pay it back, but apparently our bond counselor believes that's happened, and that's really good news, I think. Finally, we're about real estate collections, that ended on October twenty-eighth, annual tax sale. We had one thousand one hundred and sixty-three parcels of unpaid real estate taxes that went to sale for about two point eight million dollars. The average bid on the, on the weighted average is two point nine-five, could have been as high as eighteen percent, like in Madison County, which had a situation where they had taxpayers that were also giving campaign contributions to the treasurer. Their average rate was eighteen percent, so two point nine-five does protect the taxpayers claim. Last year, we had a thousand and thirty-two parcels of the tax sale, so pretty much close to where we were. We ended the year with a ninety-nine point eight-seven percent collection percentage. I think over the last fourteen years, we have a ninety-nine point six-six average for all those years. So tax districts are getting almost the entire round of money that they have left. As a particular, for ninety-nine point eight-seven, that means about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars that was not collected, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars from bankrupts. That's my report, it was, by the way, I didn't print it out. I was going to, but I missed the deadline by a day apparently, and I just couldn't bring those up to print three hundred pages. So it's on my website, as is every month for the last several years, and unless the way has a real deck for that, I think I'll just direct you to my website over here rather than just waste so much paper about asking if you accept it, please, Tom.
Motion by, to do so by Stephanie, seconded by Patsy. That's a good point, you're actually concerned about saving money, that's all green, appreciate that, very good. Anything else for Dan? Patsy?
Since we've done these tax anticipation morons for, what, three or four years?
Four years.
Do you carry it all in your memory, whether it's possible nursing home, or is there interest in these?
I can tell you, I can tell you last year, yeah, last year was one point two percent, we paid about sixty-five hundred dollars in interest.
Thank you.
Anything else for Deb? All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next up, under other business. You guys ready? Under other business, approval of amendment to county administrative contracts, is there a motion for approval? By Tom, seconded by Brad. Discussion. There is a new version at your desks tonight, and that's the version that Tom has moved and Brad have seconded. Questions, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. There is no chair's report, items, four consents, A1, B, all of the items one through five, D, six and seven, E1. That's it. Thank you. I'm sorry, six, the, the, D6 has to go on the right agenda.
Good evening from policy, I'm going to ask for your forbearance tonight because I am walking with a patient, and you should get your flu shot early. I've had two last couple days, so I'm going to be slower on the update than I normally am.
Could I request, I talked to Pius about this, could we move?
Do your mind.
Could we use, could we move D to, to, I'm sorry, the gentleman.
Hey, I don't know if anybody has a reason not to?
I'll move approval of D2.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, first thing we will address then is the, yeah, I'm not fast, so I'll need to update. First thing we're going to talk about is item E2 on the agenda, which is the resolution is support naming the US courthouse in Urbana in honor of James R. Burgess Jr., I think a motion.
Second.
Moved by Stan, seconded by Geraldo. Discussion. Mr. Alex.
I'd like to speak to this, as Mr. Quilber and I helped to put this together. When I first became aware of Mr. Burgess's record and this potential interest in naming this, the federal US courthouse after him, I did a little research, and this was one of these situations where the more that I read about this guy, the more I realized, you know, what have I done with my life? This is a man who has an amazing record, I mean, he's a war hero, career soldier, as his son pointed out, graduated the University of Illinois College of Law, trailblazer in terms of holding positions in the State's Attorney's Office, and US Attorney, truly a pillar to the community. I also went and looked at what other federal, who other federal courthouses and federal buildings in the state of Illinois are, are named after, and not surprisingly, they are generally named after former politicians. And I asked the board, if we're looking for someone who we can hold up as an example of what we hope future generations of Champaign County citizens can aspire to, do we want it to be an retired congressman or senator, or do we want it to be somebody who I think truly embodies the values that we all stand for? So I full-heartedly encourage the board to pass this resolution, which will then go to our senators and our United States congressmen, urging them to rename this, this building. Thank you.
Tom?
With all due respect, Mr. Alex, I knew Jim Burgess, he was a cunt of a politician, quite frankly, a very good State's Attorney, but he's a brilliant politician. We're all politicians in this room. I don't have an objection to the building being named after Mr. Burgess, I would object to a number of things being named for him, he's a fine person, I enjoy him as a human being, I spent time with him at Democratic gatherings, I was committeeman in the West Part of Champaign for some years, used to visit him and have lunch with him, so I got to know him, had a lot of respect for him. My problem isn't with Mr. Burgess, my problem is with the process. I, when I hate any buildings, I begin with, I think they all belong to taxpayers, and I love all the people, I, I've always been bothered by the way these Champaign Park Districts names buildings after sitting members of the park district board, and the boards seem to do this, I think it's very objectionable. My old dear friend John Severance, former mayor of Champaign, we used to talk about this, he's a mayor of the city as well, and she said, no one should have anything named after him to live in yet at least seventy-five years. I don't know that go quite that far, but I think she made a point. I think the buildings belong to taxpayers, but more importantly, I think there needs to be a legitimate process in terms of Dick Durbin, who happens to be the current senior Senator making these decisions. You know, we used to just pick family judges, and some just still do, but whoever made the biggest campaign contribution got the anointment. The senior Senator would recommend that person to the president, and that's who got the appointment. Durbin and other senators have set up panels, or even more interesting, applying for these positions, or they're recommended to these positions, they are screened by panels of judges, of members of the bar, of citizens, to evaluate credentials before they make recommendations regarding judgeships. I think that's a good practice. I would like to see if we're going to, if we're going to name federal buildings that belong to all the people, and then name them after them, because I would like to see some process developed in which the senators from a given state, in this case Illinois, like, have panels, and people make recommendations, if you're going to name a building, who should be recommended for that? What are the criteria? Is the criteria that you are a State's Attorney, a progress person, a debt senator? We don't seem to have actual criteria, which is, you know, Burgess is very, very worthy. I can think of people in this community and in the larger community, because this district is much bigger than Champaign County, who are founders of this community, Judge Cunningham, Judge Weber, folks like this that definitely have strong connections. I don't even believe, and I could be wrong in this, if there's a federal courthouse in the state of Illinois, I don't think there's one actually named for Abraham Lincoln. There may be one for Abraham Lincoln Marvitz, but I don't think there is one for our own Abraham Lincoln, not that I'm suggesting that. But that's the problem, is every one of, there's lots of different people of merit, Jim Burgess is definitely a person of merit, which is why it bothers me greatly to vote against this, because I think there needs to be the process, and that's what's bothering me. I adore this man, and it's very hard for me to vote against this resolution, but I'm going to.
We're not the ones actually making the, the name change, I think Senator Durbin's the one who probably is in the cap group seat on that one. We're just making a recommendation here, are we not?
That's my understanding.
Well, you know, this is, others can do the same thing. Tom, good luck getting the federal government to do all of what you just suggested, I mean, it sounds good, but talk about, talk about impossible to make happen, so good recommendations come up, I'm going to support.
Dan.
Brendan, to my word, I feel what Tom wants to suggest to Senator Durbin, that the process in particular, but I think this is somewhere that we recognize, it's still all of the things, but instead of that, I also knew Mr. Burgess was the member of my church, and his humble work, he was also very effective in the community, and thinking about changes for justice, signs and support.
Diane.
I agree with Mr. Betts. It's kind of important when you name a whole building after somebody, and not that the man isn't deserving and having recognition, I just think that there is a process, you know, that we should go through, and, you know, I, I don't know that maybe there aren't some other individuals that also deserve nomination also, so, like I said, not that he isn't deserving or being recognized, I agree with Mr. Betts, federal buildings are a big place to put a name on for the rest of this town.
That's.
I just want to say I concur with Mr. Betts, and I think it's important for this defensive election process.
Sam?
All in favor of Brendan, because I agree with him, it's a resolution that a name was brought forth, anybody else can do it, I didn't see my name out there, but that's okay. We can argue who's worth it and who's not, but this was something that came forth, and based on the facts, and based on the history, what little I do know about this gentleman. Other buildings in this county and roadways have been named after people, I think we even have one after that REO Speedway honorary.
All right, anybody else want to speak the first time for the election, Mr. Alex? Alex.
With respect to the opinions that were, that were stated about the process, and I, I definitely concur with what Mr. Betts says, to the extent that I think it would be appropriate if there were a, you know, sort of defined federal process more affirmative than whatever the senior senator feels like doing, but my understanding is that it has been the process in the past. That being said, I think in this case, I would hate to see the perfect be the enemy of the good. I think we've identified a individual with a salutary career and an commendable record, and I think it is entirely appropriate that Champaign County should advance his name to, to Senator Durbin's office, and allow the senator, as you said, to, to be the arbiter who did the election.
All right, we're ready to vote.
Our real call.
And I, and I'll exercise the privilege of the chair, and I think we'll call them.
Anderson?
Yes.
Benza?
Yes.
Burkeson?
No.
Betts?
No.
Carter?
What, what are the courses?
We're voting on the resolution to support naming the courthouse after James R. Burgess Jr.
How we do that?
Yes.
Coor?
Yes.
Esri?
Yes.
Holderfield?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Langenhain?
I said no.
Maxwell?
Yes.
Baginti?
Yes.
Michaels?
No.
Moser?
Yes.
Nuda?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Petrie?
No.
Richards?
Yes.
Rosales?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Royville?
Yes.
Wasn't there? Wibley?
Yes.
Wasn't there?
Yes.
I voted yes as well.
I'm sorry.
I wasn't called.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah, this might not be a lax order, but why, why, why we do this? Something that's a order, why was it just rolled up tonight, instead of giving people time to have some input and be corrected in what they're doing? This what bothers me about this board anymore.
All right, Mr. Carter, I know your concern is there-
Well, this is very important. Oh, man, I can't understand.
This is our forum for discussing-
Well, what I'm saying, you can't get here tonight and digest something like this and just get your hands on it when you get to the meeting, you know?
All right, your concern is noted.
That, as I say, we should go back to completely form, we just not yet, we not yet.
All right. Now, moving on to our next item, I'm going to suggest that we put these appointments for water districts together, the first two appointments.
For the second one, one district, Frank Howard, for uninspired terminally, May 31st, 2015. For the community public water district, Jason Zahn, for uninspired terminally, May 31st, 2016.
All right, second by Mr. Alex, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion carried. Mr. Wibley, for the vote date appeals meeting?
I nominate Bernie Magnuson and Pamela Borowski, for term December 1st, 2011, to November 30, 2013.
Second.
Second by Mr. Moser. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion carried. Nurse Home Board?
I nominate three candidates for the three openings, Peter Shafowski, Beth Menrow, LaShonda Haverick, for terms from December 1st, 2011, to November 30, 2013.
Second by Mr. Betts. I know that the information for LaShonda Haverick is in the agenda. Any questions, these are the service. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? And I also entertain putting the Senior Services Advisory Board nominations together. Mr. Wibley?
We have the candidates, Jimmy Kaiser and Jane Basin, for terms from December 1st, 2011, to November 30, 2013. And Sherri Gordon and Hal Lowick, for terms from December 1st, 2011, to November 30, 2014.
Second.
Second by Stephanie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion passed. Okay. Any note on the vacation, or any position listed? Any questions about the recommendation for the county board calendar 2012? Intervent motion. So moved by Mr. Alex. Second by the world. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Likewise, for the 2012 policy calendar? That's a question. All right. Now, we have a recommendation for amendment of personnel policy. Intervent motion. Moved by Mr. Moser.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosales. Discussion.
It's a very simple amendment, it's simply changing the state's eligibility to indicate that the policy does not pertain to the appointed officials who are the members of the board.
All right, see no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? And now a recommendation amendment of the purchasing policy. Intervent motion.
So moved.
Mr. Esri? Second by Dan James. Any discussion, or any want to say that we need discussion?
I think it's pretty well spelled out in the memorandum, which is in your packet. There is a new copy of the actual policy itself, because it came to my attention that what was highlighted in blue really looked like it was rejected. So the blue is now text rather than highlighted. So those are the phase three changes, and the second phase are in green, and the first are in yellow. I would just point out to you that it seemed appropriate if we were bringing any change, if I was bringing any changes, recommendations to the purchasing policy to you, that I should bring everything that I think is appropriate for you to consider. And as I've said in my memo, what prompted this is the change with regard to not having a buyer anymore, and changing, you know, centralized stores inventory. So however you want to approve this, is at your discretion.
All right, Patsy?
Well, I'd like to offer an amendment, page 118, 1, under D and E. D, resulting in meetings and discussions of the award of a bid, be open to the public, and welcome to the public's participation. And what I'd like to add is an E, and then move E to a help, and that any conversations had with any of the bidders outside of the open process is posted on the county website.
So I'll second to that amendment.
Second.
Discussion on the amendment.
Question. What do we mean by conversations? And I guess I'm trying to hear exactly what the amendment is, and I have a real hard time.
Patsy, could you explain a little bit more?
Yes. It's a pattern of bidding after Senate Bill 51, and where the, this applies only to the state, but I do think it's a good context in that, that bill that might be good for the county, and that any conversations that are had by any of the decision makers in relationship to a potential bid, if this happens outside of the open process, for whatever reason, the bid needs to be posted on the county website, so that that still becomes all part of the open process. Yeah, follow up?
Yes.
It's a little bit. We're going to post the fact, it's that Brendan and I are having a conversation while I'm at the Pittsburgh Mall walking, and I said, Pat, I hope so-and-so gets the bid. I didn't say, I don't, I'm not referring between, to a view between those who are bidding. Just a conversation. With a bidder? You're talking about a conversation that you had with one of the bidders? Yes. And give me a context. Context might be that that individual calls you at your office and asks some questions about process, or criteria, or any of those things, and that that then needs to be posted on the website, so that everybody knows that that conversation ensued. Do you want the content, Prissy? Do you want the content of the conversation, or the fact that there was content? I think the important thing that there was content.
I- So that also include emails, I'm concerned that that means any email that I get from people wishing to do business with the county, I'd have to somehow report, which I think would be a pain in the butt.
You could almost spoil your marriage. Brendan, ready to rock?
I'm not going to support this, muddies the process. You know, it happens in negotiations, what happens outside of negotiations, I understand the open meetings, and we have to be good enough to abide by open meetings, but come on.
Ralph, microphone please.
I think pursuing an untangible idea, before long, we're going to have to report up conversations with the wife.
Right, for all the, please, we'd be wasted.
No, my job in the west, that we could always spoil a pious, or a board member's files, we're all public workers, so at any one time, I believe, any one citizen could spoil any communications that we have received pertaining to any of that.
All right, I'm going to let Mr. Alex go next.
I guess I can't support this in the form in which it was stated, because I share some of Mr. Betts' concerns, it seems a bit vague. I will say though, I mean, there are, if there is specific language in the state's revised purchasing policy, which I think would be beneficial, I would suggest that you bring that in the future as a specific amendment, so that we can look at it in greater detail, but I'm not comfortable making a change on the fly.
I think also, if we follow the rules of the letter, I couldn't even delete those emails, I have to report emails. And then, I feel like if I delete them, I still have to report them.
This is my second time, so if someone else is. I think I understand the gist of what Patsy's doing, and I even have some sympathy for the position. I will tell you, as a person who has a Wolf's University of Illinois, and has folks regularly contacted my office by email and in person to try to sell legal materials, development materials, assessment materials, what have you, we literally have to block it, because the time that it takes literally to fill out all of the reports ends all of our time. We won't let a salesperson darts in the door of the office, it becomes that difficult, and that's what I'm afraid of here, is that we leave the situation where, you know, I see Tommy Burns at the mall, and say, hey, Tom, how you doing, blah, 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 and he happens to have a bid, or an RFQ for the county, and that means that conversation, which had really nothing to do with that bid, has to be reported.
I didn't, yes, here, I was out, in the state of reservation, but I believe there already statute that have to really give enough information that we can give out, let's say, to have a bid process. I think there's already a statute in the books, that it's either misdemeanor or any of the following, that you cannot give information to a bidder that puts another bidder at a disadvantage, in other words, you being a public official can't give that out. And I was always, as a county official, I was always quite concerned about that statute.
Mr. Alex? I apologize if this is very slightly off-topic, but if you do want to bring, or if another movement wants to bring a proposal forward in the future to deal with this issue, one way in which I've seen this dealt with in other organizations is through pre-bid conference, where essentially the vendors are allowed to come to a single pre-bid conference, questions are answered there, and then essentially, any contact is forbidden between the staff and the vendor husband at that pre-bid conference. I'll just throw that out there as something that can be considered, although I'm not necessarily indicating it's supported.
Well, and if I may, that is the concept that we use in many of the RFPs, depending on what it is that's being purchased. But if, for example, we're looking at a bid for, an RFP for the courthouse sound system and video arrangement system, as you have authorized us to move forward with, well, that RFP will include a pre-bid conference, and it includes follow-up, where if any vendor provides questions, we document those questions for all of the vendors, and provide to all of the vendors an endendum, which is posted on our website, documenting the answers to those questions. So it is not a record of every verbal conversation, or posting every email, but I certainly think we are addressing the issues that would be, you know, taken in by a conversation, by the way we manage the RFP process.
All right, Patsy?
Okay, I will withdraw my amendment, and I'll come back at a later time with some other form of protest. Thank you.
So returning to discussion on the name motion. Go ahead.
But don't you all think this should be considered as a study session, something this important? I just can't see we keep, you know, my goodness. This is a very foreign document that we turn, and what procedure have we been taking in this?
I can suggest to Ms. Ammons, that the chair of the policy committee, if she feels like it is a study session, she can bring it to this body for a study session.
Because the state have regulation too, that you should be putting into the document, that you're supposed to go by.
Or we do have to follow our own purchasing requirements.
This has been written by legal too.
Well, I hope we consider that, instead of just grand charming it all through and not giving those, you know.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side?
Then the last thing on the agenda under administrator's report is the fiscal 2012 property liability workers' compensation insurance renewals.
All right, and the motion for approval.
Totally.
Second.
Seconded by Ralph. Any discussion? Mr. Alex?
Just, I'd like the county administrator to speak to the increases, and do you feel these are indicative of increasing loss ratio, or are we simply getting held up here?
Actually, our broker is here, and can probably speak more specifically with regard to the increases, but I can tell you that these increases were completely in line with what our expectations were, and our fiscal 2012 budget numbers, which we put together in August before we had this information, do cover the increases that are being presented through the state.
If our broker hasn't that come, it would be terrific to hear from him.
Our broker's Molly Rollings from Benham Brothers Events.
Hello. The increases, the majority of the increases are coming in the law enforcement liability, and that is actually due to not so much your account, but there have been quite a few losses sustained statewide, so the rates have increased in that sector. The property went up a little bit due to some of the losses that have been incurred over the last three years, however, that was kept very much in line. We initially came in at just under a 5% increase, is what, which is what we discussed in budgeting. However, in reviewing the account, we also looked at the liability limits that the county carries, and I made the recommendation, based on other counties in the area, you guys were carrying pretty low limits, so I did recommend that we increase the umbrella, so you have $10 million in coverage versus $6 million the past few years. So that's where a large part of the increase is coming into.
Thank you, and between the two of you, can you remind me, what, how does our property cover? I know that we have a very high deductible there, is that correct?
We have a $5,000 deductible, actually on the property, we have a large deductible on the liability side.
What, does that cover vehicles, property cover vehicles?
There is, physical damage on all vehicles over $100,000 with a $25,000 deductible.
That's the deductible, I guess I was thinking of. We had the, when we had the truck catch fire, and that was on the counter, right? Insurance did cover that.
It did not, but Cincinnati is assisting the state's attorney with subrogation recommendations in that area, even though they didn't cover it, since they covered the building, they are helping with that process as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further questions? Same none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion carries. Now we are at D. 1, recommendations for a semi-annual review of both session minutes. Patsy, you want to speak to that?
I want to make a motion.
Okay.
I move in addition to procedural policy for the semi-annual review of both session minutes, it's a procedure, it's just enough, one, federal characterization of both session minutes by our legal counsel to the eight areas as listed on page 144 of the agenda. Two, when both session minutes reach the end of each time period per area, the county board shall examine these notes and decide to open them or to keep them closed. Three, both session minutes which have not reached the end of each time period per area will not be examined and will remain closed. Pass over.
Second.
Hi, Mr. Moser? Uh, yep, Mr. Alex was pointing out I skipped something, but we'll come back to it since we're only for our motion. Any, any discussion on this recommendation? Patsy?
Ah, yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Wibley why labor negotiations contribute to this.
Well, it was a compromise. I believe you recommended five to 10, Mr. Betts said forever, and Mr. Whitehead said, well, I'm on your side, I'm going to keep it.
Mr. Wangheim?
Microphone? Microphone. It's sort of a compromise. The question is, how long do those records sit, how long do they have to sit to be told in office? That is, are they likely to be involved with current activities at the time that they're released? I think 100 years is probably a little bit high, but forever is unacceptable from the point of view of maintaining a historic record. It's a little bit optimistic too, that they'll have them for 100 years. Mr. Alex? I just want to make sure we have a chance to hear Mr. Betts, who made the most useful comments on this the last time around, I think.
I was going to make it, it's an amendment for life and being until such time as all of the current members of Labor Committee die, but I'm not going to do that. My, my concern about opening up Labor, it will always get bored, given if you pass this resolution, it will ultimately always get bored whether or not to open up any of these committees and close session minutes. I think Labor does present some unique issues, because in your Labor Committee, you were discussing not just how much you're offering, what have you, and authority, but strategic issues, and you can learn a great deal if you were on the other side about how a committee views strategy, and from that, you learn how to negotiate more effectively against management in that situation. We don't have the same opportunity as management to say, well, we would like to attend strategy sessions of the people who are bargaining on behalf of that, or any other group. That is my meaning, which means I think it does reveal strategy. Do I think 100 years is an arbitrary, capricious thing of life and being, I don't know what you do, but I think we should be very cautious about opening up minutes that reveal strategy in terms of negotiations, and if you're going to do that, I think it poses some risks. I certainly would, if I were on the other side, actually, if we start opening up everything 10 years ago, I'd get every one of those sessions and start looking at it, because certain commonalities, one, some of us have been on that committee that long, there's certain commonalities, and you can learn a lot.
Mr. Alex? If I could follow up, Tom, I assume you're saying that 100 years isn't giving away the store? Thank you.
All right, then let's vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Okay, backing up to the section C. 1 that I skipped, you have the monthly fee report from the county clerk, and they're making a motion to accept the place on file. Mr. Wangheim? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? And now we are, I don't think it's been done. Okay, we're now considering the approval of an agreement for the provision administration of Metcalf line between the city of Champaign, city of Atlanta, Champaign County, and University of Illinois.
So moved.
All right, Mr. Alex, second by Mr. James. Discussion? Mr. White, can you stick to the word that you're suggesting?
Wow, it's, Deb, I can do a little more, I was involved in part of it, it's a, basically a modified version of what we had in the past, I worked with the language of, including the designation of the positions of the county representatives, Deb, are there any other major changes?
The last time this intergovernmental agreement was approved was in 1996, and the changes have to do with the need to further define how members are appointed, and what really led to it is how an appointed member designates an option in their assets, because there was a problem with four on set critical votes, so that's what prompted the changes to be done. The primary change for the county is that we now acknowledge that the sheriff is a party to this agreement. Previously, the county board was the only party to the agreement, but the sheriff of the county by elected officials should be a part of this now, and that's, you know, basically, it's, it has also been reviewed by legal counsel of all involved entities and all legal counsel of that side.
Ready for lawyers? All right, any, any questions? Mr. Jay?
Is the sheriff our only party to this, or representative of this board?
The county board determines who the designee is, who's called the administrator designee, who votes on the budget, and the county board chair makes that appointment, and the county administrator has held that appointment for a long time.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion carries.
Yes, I think it's all of the appointments, all of the appointments and items B. 2, 4, 5, and 6, and D. 1 and D. 3.
All right, thank you, Mr. President, other business, I seek approval of the county administrator's sudden motion to committee close session minutes for October 17, 2011. Moved by Mr. Rosales, seconded by.
Brad.
By Brad, according to Mr. James. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.